Welcome to the Board of Education Awards Night, the last of three this school year. Here to welcome you, it's my pleasure to introduce our Board Chair, Ms. Virginia Jacobs. Ms. Jacobs, come on out.
Right behind you. Hello, good evening. So, Mr. Zarin is correct that this is another one of the Board Awards Program. We look forward to these events all through the year because it gives us an opportunity to say thank you, gives us an opportunity to honor you and the great work that you do. Tonight, I would like to introduce my colleagues who are here. Ms. Rosalyn Johnson is behind me back here, she's District One, she'll be out in a minute. Mr. Henry Armwood, District Seven. Ms. Carolyn Boston. Ms. Donna Hathaway-Bach. And our Student Board Member, Ms. Faith Jackson. So, on behalf of the Board, we are delighted to be here tonight to honor you. Also, in attendance tonight, we have Dr. Coleman Potter, who was our Deputy Superintendent, who's also back here, coming out in a minute. And then we have several Associate Superintendents and Instructional Directors here tonight. Well, when we begin our program, we had, we just had the ROTC do our Presentation of Colors, want to thank them for their work and for participating in the program tonight. At this time, we're going to have a number of presentations, I'm going to kind of walk you through the process. Colors for us, who is also, who's been with us for a long time in the school district, but also is with WJLA Channel Seven and Eight, you probably recognize him and his work, he's going to assist us in the presentations. I want to thank the Board of Education Office Staff, who has helped us in preparing this program, and it does take a lot of work to put it together, you can see your beautiful programs that you have, and then to make sure that everybody gets their appropriate awards, so that when you come up here to get your pictures, you already have everything in place. We also want to thank our Office of Communications and Television Resources, who's also helped us with this work. And before I forget, the choir, we want to give them another round of applause. So, this is how it's going to work. To the honorees, Mr. Zarin is going to call your name, and when he calls your name, you come forward to get your plaque, you may bring your friends and family along with you, so that they can enjoy the picture with you, and I think Mr. Pike is here to take pictures for us this night, this evening. So, a group photo will happen. After the photograph, you can take your seat, and we're going to proceed to the next presentation. After the program, we have a reception that we are hosting in your honor as well, it's a very brief program afterwards, so don't forget to do that. I would like for my colleagues to please come forward to help in presenting the awards, and shaking all your hands, and giving you hugs if that's what you want. And I just want you to know, I forgot my flat shoes. Now, I don't often wear flat shoes because I'm so short, I have to try to reach over this podium every time, but I'm here to tell you that every single time we have the Board Awards Program, I enjoy it, my colleagues enjoy it, we are grateful to see you come forward and get the awards that you really, really deserve, and we want you to know that no matter how long it takes, you're going to get your awards tonight, and we're going to be here to celebrate it with you. So, thank you so much for being here. Dr. Coleman Potter, if you would please come forward, and I would like for you to at least make sure that I, I'm sure I miss who the Instructional Directors are, I want to make sure that you introduce them on behalf of Superintendent and yourself.
Good evening. This is a very special time of the year for all of us in education, because not only do we get to educate your wonderful children, we are nearing upon the time when we actually get to graduate them as well. And we say that every cap and gown has a story, so not only will we celebrate our valedictorians and salutatorians tonight, but also wonderful educators who add to this process and make it a rich one for our children. We have quite a few of our Instructional Directors and Principals with us tonight, too many for us to name, but we certainly like to honor their service to our wonderful system. So, if you are an Instructional Director or Principal, would you please stand so that we could acknowledge you? These are the fearless leaders who lead the work every day, and we are certainly welcoming them as well as thanking them for their services 2011-12 school year. At this point, we will commence with our recognition ceremony, thank you.
Actually, I believe at this time, as my colleagues are coming forward, we are going to hear from the choir one more time. We're looking forward to it, thank you.
Nice round of applause again for our wise singers. Thank you, Ms. Howard, wonderful, great way to start our evening. We can see why they're an award-winning choir. All right, we're just about to get started here, hope you're in a good mood, it's a little warm in here tonight, isn't it? Yeah. I'm already getting blamed, they said, "Weatherman, what didn't you do right?" One of the Board Staff, when I came in, she said, "Mr. Zarin," she said, "I'm very mad at you." I said, "What did I do this time?" She said, "Yes," she said, "it's going to rain all week long." I said, "That's true." She said, "Well, couldn't you change anything?" "Well, look outside right now," I said, "I made the sun come out because I knew I had to drive down here, I have that power, you know." You know, on Saturday, the other day, I emceed an event called Kids for Science, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders at Eleanor Roosevelt High School, and they had all of their projects in the cafeteria, and one of them was titled, "Weather Forecasters." Can we really trust them? That hurt me. I told the little girl afterwards, I said, "Yes, Virginia, you can trust us, we're always right." Tonight, we're here because this is a season of celebration. Every year, as school draws to a close, we do this, we take note of accomplishment, and let those students who have done extraordinary things know that we're proud of them and grateful for their efforts. Graduates, and there are some of them here tonight, in particular, get well-deserved pats on the back. Scholarship money, if they're lucky. Windfall cash from relatives, if they're luckier still. And lots of inspirational words as they begin the next phase of their lives. You know, at that event at Roosevelt with those fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, the auditorium was packed as it is tonight, but it was filled with youngsters, sitting on the edge of their seat, dressed up, even though it was Saturday afternoon, some of them in white lab coats. And when their names were announced, they come up to get their plaques and their ribbons, they shot out of their seats, like contestants on The Price is Right. They came running down the aisle, they didn't bother with the steps, they jumped right onto the stage, giving their parents fits, we had no accidents. When they grabbed their ribbons, it was like they'd won the Stanley Cup. They were so enthused, they were so happy, the exuberance of youth. Tonight, as we honor over 150 of you, 75 students, 89 teachers and principals, and one parent, there's no need to come rushing down the aisle, partly because you've already gotten your certificate. What we're going to ask you to do, is when I call your group, is to line up to your left, my right, along that corridor in the back there. You'll come through this archway here, some of you have index cards that you've filled out, some of you not. As you come out, hand me the card if you have one, I'll tell the audience a little bit about you and your award, you'll come out, our Board Members will be here with Dr. Coleman Potter. Bring your certificate with you, so that you have that for your photo op. Also, bring all of your relatives and colleagues who are here tonight and sweating it out with you as you get your moment in the sun. Over the next hour, among our many superstars out there, you're going to meet 50 valedictorians and salutatorians from our 24 high schools. If the math doesn't work out, that's because two schools had ties. Bowie has two valedictorians, and Flowers has two salutatorians. Among these vows and salves is one Gabrielle Gibert, Friendly's valedictorian. Gabrielle, I don't know if you're out there or not, but she's following a family tradition since last year her brother Myron was the valedictorian from Friendly. Yeah, isn't that pretty good? That's great. Myron is now at Hampton University, and yep, Gabrielle is headed there too. A little sibling rivalry and competition and mutual support. You're also going to meet tonight the amazing Joan Tassai, she's the valedictorian at Duval. Where is Joan? Joan was born in this country, but left very soon thereafter for Taiwan, spoke fluent Chinese while she was there, but she came back to this country when she was in the 10th grade, speaking not a word of English, not a word of English in 10th grade. In just two years, when she took the AP Chinese exam, of course she got a five, nothing spectacular about that, but she also scored a five in AP Literature. Imagine that in two years. Joan, you're wonderful. I was thinking if the situations were reversed, how would we do if we'd gone to China? Would we have mastered Chinese as quickly? I think not, I think not. And speaking of valedictorians, you're also going to meet tonight Erin Reed, one of the Teachers of the Month, he teaches 3rd grade at Glen Ridge Elementary School. Erin just happens to be the 1998 valedictorian from Surrattsville High School. Where is Mr. Reed? Is he here tonight? What a great honor and a compliment to have him back with us in a Prince George's classroom, this time as a teacher, just a sampling of the folks you're going to see tonight. All right, we're about to get started, we're going to have our Board Members come out, give them a nice big hand because they have to stand all night up here. And as they are coming out, if you are one of the Scholars of the Week, one of the Scholars of the Week, would you please line up along the side over here, so that we can recognize you tonight, one of the Scholars of the Week. Please bring your family with you, and your certificate. Right behind them, we're going to be honoring the National Achievement Scholarship winners. There are six of you, all from Eleanor Roosevelt High School. If you are here tonight, would you line up right behind them? All right, who wants to be our first victim, volunteer? Come on out. Just come around here, if you've got a card with you, so I know who you are, that will help us, come on out. Our first honoree hails from Oxon Hill High School, would you welcome Senior A-Ray Alexander and her family? A-Ray. A-Ray has taken six, count them, six AP classes. She's the Treasurer of the Student Government Association, she's in the National and Spanish Honor Societies, she tutors elementary and middle school students in math, she has a lot and she gives back. She has a number of schools that she has applied to, she wants to major in Civil Engineering, and she wants to revolutionize our transportation system, amen to that. 350 community service hours she's logged, she has a blue belt in Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu, and is a national champion in that field. We treat her with much respect tonight. She also enjoys reading novels, there she is, A-Ray Alexander, thank you for being the first one here tonight. Welcome to this program here tonight, please come on out, nice to have you all here, please welcome Kyle Ortola from Potomac High School, Scholar of the Week. Kyle has a 3.85 GPA, not too shabby, member of the Academy of Business and Finance, four AP classes, Student Government President, National Honor Society, tennis team co-captain. This young man is headed to Embry-Riddle Aeronautical University in Florida, where he will major in aeronautical engineering and aeronautical physics. This is one smart guy. He's been awarded a number of medals in his native Philippines, he enjoys playing basketball and tennis, and he writes poetry and short stories. Kyle Ortola, distinguished young man. Our next honoree, our next Scholar of the Week, is Senior Tony Hinton, and Tony will be coming back another time on this stage, we'll tell you why in a moment. Tony has a 4.11 GPA, she has taken a number of AP classes and honors classes, she is a scholar athlete, varsity volleyball, varsity softball, National Honor Society, Summit Peer Leader, she is headed to Morgan State University, and she'll be studying actuarial science, and she is also the Female Scholar-Athlete of the Year at Largo High School, she is an all-around outstanding young lady. Tony Hinton. Here is Jalen Prince from Northwestern High School, another Scholar of the Week. 3.6 GPA, honors English, honors Chemistry, AP Calculus, he took all the easy classes, you can see. Outdoor track, golf, basketball, volunteered at Share Food Warehouse to distribute food to the homeless, he will be attending Towson in the fall, he wants a bachelor's degree in sports management, he wants to have a, not just a career, a successful career as a sports agent or manager of a team, he must have seen Jerry Maguire, the movie, many times. Jalen Prince, outstanding young man, our Scholar of the Week from Northwestern. Our next honoree, Surrattsville High School sends us their Scholar of the Week, Marquita Hill. Marquita, welcome to the stage. This young lady has a 3.91, she too will be coming back up to the stage as a valedictorian or salutatorian in a few moments. This young lady is amazing, she's going to Spelman College, she's going to major in Biology, and she told her principal, she said, "Actually, what I want to do with my degree is become a forensic odontologist." Yeah, right, pretend you know what that is. She really thought about dentistry, but odontology, you know, the daunt is in there, these are the folks, she's watched, I guess, too many CSIs, the tooth marks that are left on corpses and all, that lets you know, a clue, anyhow, that's what she's going to be doing at Spelman. Marquita, congratulations. Our next honoree is the 2012 Comcast Parent Involvement Award semifinalist, this is the only parent that's going to be making the trip to the stage tonight with a certificate. Could we please welcome Barbara Fisher from Carrollton, nice to see you. Come on out, thank you. Barbara was the Prince George's representative, one was chosen from each county, and one from Baltimore City. Just on Friday, May 20th, the selection was made for the state winner. The Comcast Parent Involvement was put out by Comcast to recognize parents who do exceptional volunteer work. Let me tell you about Barbara, she's at Carrollton Elementary, her principal, John N. Carey, says she's the heart and soul of Carrollton, she is personally involved, committed to the entire school, she does things that most people would have to be paid to do, she has everybody over to her house, all 70 staff members every year for the end-of-the-year luncheon. She also sponsors beautification days where she plants flowers around the school, she's a positive role model for all the students and parents, and her grandchildren, who attend that school, somehow managed to share her with the 600 students there at Carrollton. Barbara, I also understand you won a special award the other night in Baltimore, you got the Joanne L. Carter Award, named specifically for the parent who exemplifies all that Mrs. Carter, who passed away recently, held dear, so you are doubly honored, and you do us honor, thank you, Ms. Carter, and Ms. Fisher, excuse me. Next, I take personal pride and bring to the stage the winners of this year's Science Bowl competition. Could we have the Martin Luther King Junior Middle School come up first, and right behind them, the University Park Elementary School team? While they're getting lined up on the side, and there are a lot of them, I hope you've watched Science Bowl, we're on YouTube, we're on Channel 96 and 38, this is our 26th year, and these two winning teams are no strangers to the winner's circle. Martin Luther King, this is their third championship in our 26-year history, and University Park, five times they have won the championship, all because of great students who have persevered, and great parents, and great coaches. Let's have the middle school team come on out, and Ms. Butler's telling everybody, "Come on, let's move." Your principal is here, Ms. Wilterson, come on out, thank you. Would you please welcome Ms. Wilterson, the principal of Martin Luther King, Elizabeth Butler, the sponsor, and the team, Liam Greaves, his twin sister, Antheris Greaves, Zach Landau, Zach Reed, Count. Liam Greaves, his twin sister, Antheris Greaves, Zach Landau, Zach Reed, Kaut Lio, and Erin McGlawn, our middle school winner. And now could we have the University Park team? Come on out, guys. Thank you. I know who you are. Nancy, good to have you. Jeff, good to have you. Chris, nice to have you here. Everybody, thanks for being here. Look at this crowd. Half the audience is up here. Nice to have you. Please don't leave. Please don't leave. Thank you. We do have a nice reception afterwards. This University Park team, no elementary school team has won more championships in our twenty-six years. Five of them for this team. And what is especially gratifying, Mr. Faverro, is some of the team members told me, and I remember them, their older siblings were also on our show and did not win. So the younger ones win, so they can, this is bragging rights for the young people who are on this team. They won on, one of the last questions was about pink slime that was much in the news. The ammonium hydroxide that was added to our ground meat that made such, everyone was repulsed. They knew it. Our show was all about current events and science blended together. These young people studied, they knew exactly what we were going to ask. And they all, thanks to Mr. Faverro and Nancy Schickner, their wonderful principal. They always come dressed in T-shirts that have periodic tables on. They look like outcasts from the Big Bang Theory when they come on. They're such a great team. Thank you, guys, for being here. Congratulations. See you next year. Randy Williams arrived just now. He's one of the National Achievement Scholarship winners. Randy, are you here? Randy? Sheep. Excuse my pronoun mix-up there. Randy, come on out. Sorry we missed you earlier. Here's your plaque for your photo. Again, $2,500 from the National Merit Scholarship Foundation. Very few Prince George's students got this honor. Randy Williams, one of them, along with Amber U-House and the other students listed there from Eleanor Roosevelt. One of the students on the list, Sebastian Anderson, I'm sorry he's not here tonight. He's going to Rensselaer Polytechnic. And Mr. McNeil, your secretary told me he was one of the winners of the Bill Gates Millennium Scholarships. I think some of you know what that is. We have a number of those winners tonight. Bill and Melinda Gates, if they give you this scholarship, it is for everything, not just through your first four years of college, all the way through MD or PhD, if you so choose. That's a fantastic scholarship. Our next honorees, could we have you line up, please? Our next honoree, the Alvin Meyerberg Arts Leadership Award. Then we will have the three Teachers of the Month. If you could come over to the side, please, along with Ms. Reed. And then the Washington Post Distinguished Educational Leadership Award winner, Deidre Tramell, and all of the nominees for that same award. Those are the honorees we'll be recognizing next. Ms. Reed is waiting in the wings here very patiently. She's saying, "All right, Dave, just shut up and bring me out. I was on time." Alvin Meyerberg was a philanthropist from Baltimore, a home builder, a real estate developer, and he loved arts education. Every year he gives an award to an outstanding arts teacher. Our winner this year is the principal of Mount Rainier Elementary School, Janet Reed. Here she is. Mount Rainier is receiving hundreds of dollars in art supplies from Crayola. The kids are very happy about that. Give kids crayons. Mount Rainier is an arts magnet in the sense that it draws artists there. They have dance instruction, African drumming, poetry, theater, sculpture, painting, digital photography. Artists from as far away as West Africa come to visit the school. Ms. Reed says arts integration is an important, basic component for all children. Ms. Reed is retiring this year. She has been the principal there at Mount Rainier for seven years. After a twenty-four-year career in Prince George's County, she is unfortunately leaving us. But Janet, I understand you're going to work for the State Department of Education. Is that correct? So you will still be with us. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And now our three Teachers of the Month. I hinted at Mr. Reed, I hope he's here. And Ms. Julie Holness and Ms. Elizabeth Olby. Mr. Reed, I recognize you from your photo. Come on out, please. Are you all with Mr. Reed? You're going to challenge the University Park team if you keep coming. Mr. Reed is an amazing guy, as I told you, he's the ninety-eight valedictorian from Suratsville. He is the grade level chair at Glen Ridge Elementary. He has an MBA from the University of Maryland. And he got his bachelor's degree in Justice and Criminology. He didn't always want to be a teacher. He said, "I thought I'd go into politics and then the justice system, but the Prince George's County Teaching Fellows Program gave me a unique gateway into the world of teaching. Once I stepped through that portal, there was no going back. My students never cease to amaze me with their brightness, wit, and love of learning." His principal says he has an intuitive understanding of how kids learn and support it through, he supports it through analysis of data. He's just a model teacher. That's why he's our Teacher of the Month. Mr. Reed, congratulations. Thank you for joining us. Next Teacher of the Month. She's waited a long time for this. Twenty-five years she's been at Forestville Military Academy. She was there when it was still a high school. Here she comes. This is Julie Holness, Forestville Military Academy. She's been there since 1987 and has taught math there since 1991. She's the math department teacher coordinator. She does lunchtime tutoring and she helps coach the soccer and the track teams. She said, "Since I was young, I always knew I wanted to teach. I used to play school with my sister. We'd always do math problems for fun." She said, "To loosen up the tension, my students in class, I always give them light, I give them math problems and I like when the light bulbs go off and they get it." She says, "My goal is to make my students as passionate about math as I am." Thank you for your long service. Thank you for your excellence, Ms. Holness. All right. We move on now to two very distinguished educators. Is Ms. Tramell out there in the wings? She is indeed. She's coming here. She really needs no introduction. Some of you know that every year the Washington Post recognizes outstanding principals. You see their pictures in the paper many, many times. Each county sends a representative. Ours is Deidre Tramell, the Distinguished Educational Leadership Award. She is the principal of the Francis Fuchs Early Childhood Center. Congratulations to Ms. Tramell. Thirty-one years as an educator, twenty-five in Prince George's County. She started out as a special education coordinator at Catherine T. Reed. She's been at Francis Fuchs since 2001. Get this, this is amazing, these statistics. Her center serves eight hundred and thirty-nine students and a hundred and forty instructors and support staff. Largest infant and toddler program in the county. She does PTO meetings. She has bimonthly Hispanic family seminars. She does support groups for parents with children with autism and Down Syndrome. And she has free evening English classes for her community. All of her community partnerships went from four to thirteen in the past two years. And she's now working with Disney Kaboom to build a developmentally appropriate handicap-accessible playground for her students. Ms. Tramell, you do it all. Congratulations. And the nominees for that Educational Leadership Award. Again, someone who needs no introduction because we are her guests tonight. This is the principal of Henry Wise High School, Scarlett Marrow. Fifteen years as an educator. Six years as a principal, the second year here at Dr. Henry Wise. Currently working on her doctorate. And she was, I guess I can tell you this, she wrote it down. She was Tina Turner in the lip sync competition on Comcast. All right. Scarlett, if it gets a little slow, we may bring you back. Right here? Oh, right here. It still would be good to hear. Another honoree for the Washington Post Distinguished Educator Award, the principal of Langley Park McCormick. Please welcome Amy Stout. Amy, come on out. Thirteen years with us here in Prince George's County. She believes every child can succeed, which is evident in Langley Park McCormick becoming a model school for success for all reading programs. She was a national speaker for Imagine Learning. And she says, "This is truly amazing." I don't know too many principals who would say this. She says, "I love lunch duty." God bless you, Amy. All right. The Agnes Meyer Award winner, again, one from every county. The Washington Post throws a gala dinner every year honoring these teachers, young and old. Mr. Walter Harley was our Agnes Meyer winner. Mr. Harley, come on out, please. And your, the people you have with you. Thank you. Nice to see you again. If you have not seen Mr. Harley before, you might have heard him. He's been a music educator for twenty-six years, the past nineteen at Oxon Hill. He is the musical director, he's the conductor. Eighteen of his students were accepted in the all-county high school honors band and orchestra this year. Twenty-five of them were selected to go to play with the Boston String Quartet. And in 2008, Oxon Hill students, it was all over the news, performed at the Beijing Olympics. Absolutely, deserves a hand. He's dedicated his life to uplifting young people. And Walter, I think, I think we're finished. He has already won the 2000 Prince George's County Teacher of the Year. He was the 2008 Band Director of the Year, the 2009 Love Award Teacher of the Year, and the 2010-11 Prince George's County Educator. Walter, what is left? I think that's it. Congratulations to you. The nominees for the Agnes Meyer Award. Would you please come on out, one at a time here? Thank you. Please wait. This is Linda Bryan Arons from Charles Herbert Flowers High School. Twenty-seven years and twenty years in Prince George's County, an instructional coordinator. Nice to have you here. Come on out. Hello. Are you all with Ms. Arons? Very good. Ms. Arons tells me she spent her spring break in China with eighteen students and two teachers. She stayed with a host family in Beijing and she climbed the Great Wall of China. How was that? I'll bet. Wonderful. I hope you brought back lots and shared it with the students. Thank you. This is Patricia Freeman Hall of Seabrook Elementary School. Welcome, Patricia. Sixteen years in education, eight years at Seabrook. She's a MARCO Program alumni, which is a resident teacher program. Teaching is her third career. Always been her dream, inspired by her third-grade teacher. She's a grade level chair for first and second grade at Seabrook. Patricia, what were your other careers? Food management. And your own catering business? Very good. And thank you, Ms. Brady, for coming up too, to join in the photo. This is Cassandra Hall. Again, she's hometown, this is her school. Dr. Henry Wise Junior High School, eight years in education. Nice to have you here, Ms. Hall. Join me, Mr. Blake, their Outstanding Vice Principal. I like that tie, Mr. Blake. I like it a lot. When asked what I wanted to do with math, with my math degree, I would say, "I don't know, but it won't be teaching," said Cassandra Hall. After my first I discovered I had a gift for it. And eight years later, I love what I do. And here I am tonight, being recognized. I'm currently a full National Board Certified candidate. We have no doubt you're going to complete that. Ms. Hall, congratulations to you. Please welcome Danielle Spiezak, another honoree for the Washington Post Educational Leadership Award. Excuse me, the Agnes Meyer Award. She's been at Cool Spring Elementary teaching for five years. Four years in Pennsylvania. She has a passion for teaching science and enjoys facilitating student-centered learning. I eat lunch with my fifth-grade students every day. Oh, that's very nice. Do you eat the same school lunch they do? Notice she's not saying. No. So your certificate. This is Demetrius Meban. Meban? Meban? Meban. Demetrius Meban from Glendale Elementary, twenty-two years in education, fifteen years at the same school. Outstanding Educator Award recipient in 2004. Demetrius, Demetrius, nice to have you here with your family and your colleagues. Our next honoree, Dr. Naruz Mills from Robert Goddard French Immersion. Twenty-eight years of teaching, elementary, middle, high school, and college. Wow. Fourteen years in Prince George's. Beautiful family. Dr. Mills says, "I am Syrian. My husband is Ghanaian. Our children are American. My colleagues and students are from all around the world." I like it. "I love my micro-international family. I'm pleased to work with my big, global family." You all look wonderful. Thank you all for turning out to recognize this very outstanding teacher, Dr. Mills. Congratulations to all of you. Please welcome another outstanding teacher, a runner-up for the Agnes Meyer Award, Anton Davis from Rosaryville Elementary. Welcome, Mr. Davis. And family. Seventeen years in the county. Mr. Davis is an ex-journalist, now a teacher. He says, "My Rosaryville students are my photosynthesis. And their success is the energy that propels my mission." That's very poetic. I can see that you are an ex-journalist. You are still a journalist, Mr. Davis. Please welcome Linda Riley from Hyattsville Elementary. She's much too young to be thirty, looking for thirty-eight years in Prince George's County? Amazing. Thank you, Linda, for all your service. She's been in Hyattsville since 1978. She's enjoyed teaching the children of my former students. I am mentoring the broadcast students with our daily broadcast. Hyattsville Elementary's been supporting St. Jude's Research Hospital since 1988. Linda's the third teacher to continue this support. They've donated $80,000 to St. Jude's since 1988. That's remarkable. Thank you, Linda, for all that great work. Teaches second, third, fourth grade, and now ESOL as well. Congratulations. All right, I'm sorry you weren't at Martin's Crosswinds a few weeks ago when we had the ceremony to pick this year's Prince George's County Teacher of the Year. Everyone was up on stage. It was like the Academy Awards. Dr. Hyde opened the envelope. There was a runner-up, there were four finalists on stage. And the winner, this year's Prince George's County Teacher of the Year, is about to step out. She hails from Alaska, if you can believe that. She made her way to Prince George's County. We are so lucky, somehow she found her way here. Please welcome Sherrell Stagg from Valley View Elementary. And if she is chosen Maryland Teacher of the Year, and we have every expectation that she will, that means next year she will go to the White House with all of the other state nominees who are getting all-expense-paid trips to Washington. We're going to give Sherrell a fair card. Sherrell teaches at Valley View, eight years with us. She's a special education teacher. And to witness her work, as I have, is simply magical. She's going to stay up there as all of the nominees for Teacher of the Year come out and join her. And Sherrell, would you please stay up there? Here's one of your colleagues, Jasmapola Avila from Valley View, nine years, pre-kindergarten teacher. Rebecca Gray from Gaywood Elementary, teaching for nine years. She loves to travel. She's been to Mexico, the Bahamas, and Canada. And if I remember correctly, you went to school in Pennsylvania, did you not? She's worried about her picture. Yes. Next, please. This is Madeline Johns from the Annapolis Road Academy Alternative High School. Madeline's been teaching thirty-three years. Loves to travel, loves art history. Sat in on her class where she was teaching Shakespeare. You could have heard a pin drop as she made Romeo and Juliet as relevant today as it must have been four hundred years ago. Phenomenal teacher. Our next honoree, Denise Smith, Thomas Pullen Arts Academy. Seventeen years in education. Comes to us from Minneapolis, Minnesota. She has a passion to educate African-American males in basic academic skills and social skills. She said, "I once led a pack..." She said, "I once led a pack of dogs in my house as a little girl." I can't wait to turn this over. "I cooked all the bacon and lunch meat we had. When my dad came home from work, he was mad at me. I told him the dogs were hungry, so I had to feed them." You don't do that in class, do you? You give a much better... I love the story. Thank you. Next, please. This is Tamisha Alao, another nominee for Teacher of the Year. Fourteen years with us. Formerly taught at Bowie-Farmont Heights, currently at Gwyn Park High School, teaching English. Deep love for teaching and helping children. Loves to travel. Has been to the west coast of Africa and Prague and the Czech Republic. Wonderful. Next, please. Nice to see you all again. Dr. Carolyn Moye from Panorama Elementary. Been in education for 30 years and seven years in Prince George's County. Had the chance to work with NASA in Huntsville, Alabama, and the Marshall Space Flight Center before coming to us. Hopes to motivate more females and minorities to pursue careers in math and science. Excellent role model. Thank you all for clapping for all these people. This is their big moment. I know it's warm, but thank you for being so encouraging. This is Sarah Barias from Panorama as well. Twenty years with us. Thirteen years in the Philippines. Teaches first grade and also as the science coordinator, just graduated with a master's in special education. Congratulations on your degree. Here is Peggy Chase, also from Panorama. Did you guys stuff the ballot box, or what? Eight years in Prince George's. Thirty-nine years in education, all of them in kindergarten. She said because she wouldn't let anybody promote her. She's stuck there in kindergarten, but I bet the kids are very lucky to have you. That's Peggy Chase. Thank you, Peggy. Next. This is Linda Mitchell from the H. Winship Wheatley Special Center. Twenty-five years teaching. Remarkable. First time receiving this award. I'm dedicated to the teaching profession. Two master's degrees, one in education, one in technology, education. Just wonderful. Teaching special needs children is the most rewarding thing I've done in my whole life. And that you've done it for a quarter of a century is a testament to that dedication. Thank you. This is Maria Guerrero from Woodbridge. Finally, someone not from Panorama. Twenty-five years in teaching, seven years at Woodbridge. You have to give these other schools a chance. She graduated magna cum laude from the University of Philippines, a master's degree in special ed, also a graduate scholar at De Salle University. She's happy to share her honor with her fellow Filipinos here tonight in the word mabuhay. Mabuhay. Can you translate? Long live. Very good. Thank you. Next, please. Our next honoree, probably the prettiest name you'll hear tonight, Dr. Aurora Bartolo Mendoza. Just flows so nicely. Her name means dawn. Absolutely right. Thirty-six years in education, math and physics, loves to travel, and wants Venus to be her next destination. Hmm, okay. Teaching and research are her passions. And you know, with Richard Branson and his Virgin Galactica, Venus may not be that far off. Good luck to you. Next. This is Marcus Davis. The best-dressed guy that night and the best-dressed guy tonight. He's from Suratsville High School. He's the music teacher. Thirteen years in education. He's the proud father of Donovan Davis. How old is Donovan? Four years old. A member of the greatest fraternity ever, the Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. All right, Marcus. Don't leave. Please don't leave. We have all the principals of these teachers who would like to get in on the picture. Randy, can we fit them in? Come on out. I wondered why they were waiting in the wings out there. I thought, "I didn't ask you to come up here yet." And of course, the most people waiting out there were from Panorama. As those teachers are making their way to their seats, we have yet one more Teacher of the Year in the form of the Krista McAuliffe winner. Many of you remember, of course, Krista McAuliffe, the tragic Challenger accident in 1986. Krista McAuliffe taught here in Prince George's County before going to New Hampshire. She taught at Thomas Johnson Middle School. And each year, we recognize someone who exemplifies the courage and the dedication and the excellence of Krista McAuliffe. This year's winner, Krista would have been very proud of this woman. You guys even look a bit alike, I think. Jessica Shirey, the second-grade teacher, a second-grade teacher at Perrywood Elementary, is the winner of the 2012 Krista McAuliffe Outstanding Teacher Award. Let me tell you about Jessica. Jessica, come on out so we can all see you. She spent her entire 16-year career serving students in Prince George's County, her whole career with us. Eleven years teaching second graders at Perrywood. This award is for professionalism, content knowledge, and effectiveness in the classroom. She motivates students in the areas of science and math. Some of you may recognize Ms. Shirey because she's on television. If you watch the television show Count on Us, she sits there and answers call-in questions every Monday and Wednesday for an hour, sometimes two hours. Nothing phases her. The Science Bowl team, she's the coach. The first spelling bee ever at Perrywood, she designed it. She coaches it. She monitors it. And her students also did well in this year's first-ever math, first-in-math competition. This award will be hung at, her name will be inscribed on a plaque in the boardroom forever. Jessica Shirey, would you please stay up here while we bring out the other nominees to join you? Tori Butler. This is Tori Butler from Glass Manor Elementary, seven years in education, a runner-up for Krista McAuliffe. She's originally from Northern California. She loves to travel and share that experience with students. Thank you, Tori. Next, please. Please welcome Walter Mario Williams Jr. from Farmont Heights High School. All right, Farmont Heights. Seventeen years all of Farmont Heights. He teaches business education. And he graduated from Farmont Heights in 1990. You've come full circle. His father is a 1962 graduate of Farmont. Aw, come on. Where does this stop? He was also a 2009 Agnes Meyer Outstanding Teacher nominee and a nominee for outstanding, and he was a winner. Educator, Outstanding Educator Award, so we will see you next week at the Martin's Crosswinds. Congratulations, Walter. Next, please. Please welcome Dr. Victor Aratini. Walden Woods Elementary. Twenty-two years in education. He said, "It is my considered opinion that education is a process that proceeds throughout life, greatly in the early years and never really stops." How true. Victor, is it Aratimi? Aratimi. Thank you very much, sir. Please welcome Romalita Panga from James McHenry Elementary School. Teacher of English for students of other languages. She's been with us seven years. One of the international teachers from the Philippines who arrived in the U.S. to teach. She's a member of the U.S. Task Force on Ethical Recruitment of Teachers, and we're glad to have her with us tonight. Thank you very much. This is Dawn Bath from Thomas Pullen Arts Focus School. Twenty-five years in education, 11 with us. Dawn, welcome to the stage. She coordinates the African Health Foundation. She took a group of high-risk African-American males to live and attend school in Sudan. Wow, that's very impressive, considering the conditions in Sudan. How long were you there?
Two years.
Two years. Wow. Your son was born there. What's his name?
His name is Yassine.
Yassine. Thank you. That's wonderful. Also a Thomas Pullen student. "The experience produced young men that return home as productive members of society. What a lesson you provided for them." Dawn Bath, congratulations. Thank you. Our next honoree is Shona. Shona Sandlin, National Board Certified Teacher from Carroll Highlands. Nine years she's been teaching. Considered for the Krista McAuliffe Award for Good Measure, dedicated to growing the profession, getting to know how to motivate her students better. In her free time, she likes to play basketball. All right. And do science experiments with her sons. Her son, she will receive her second master's in education from Johns Hopkins this Thursday. This is a big week for you. Congratulations. And those are our Krista McAuliffe winner and nominees. Congratulations, everybody. Now, some of those principals might have to get right back in line because we're going to recognize a list of schools that are represented by their principals in most cases tonight. The Maryland School Performance Program, some of you no doubt have heard about this. Thirty-two Prince George's Schools were recognized by our Department of Education for their performance on the MSA or the High School Assessment, the HSA, for improving performance of special populations of students. Only schools that made adequate yearly progress, AYP, were eligible for this recognition. Eight schools were recognized for overall achievement. The remaining schools made significant improvement in specific subgroups. In the past, these schools have received modest Title I financial awards. However, this year, the funding was not available for those rewards. That does not detract in any way from the accomplishment that these schools have, and we're very happy to recognize them tonight. Each of the principals, could you come out, please? Needs no introduction. From Hollywood, she is a star. Everyone's a star, Barbara Caskey. From Heather Hills, Patsy Hush. Forty-two years in education, 37 in our county, 17 at Heather Hills. Proud to be chosen. It's one of the two tag centers to open this fall. Our next principal is Carolyn George Remy at Concord Elementary. She's asked Dr. Smith to join me in accepting the award because she's the former principal of Concord. Indeed, she is. And Dr. Smith, maybe I should remind the audience that back in 1975, you and I taught across the hall from each other at Mary Bethune Jr. High. Not to date us at all. The principal of Benjamin Floyd Creative and Performing Arts Academy, Dr. Patricia Payne. Twenty-four years. 100% pass rate for Algebra HSA. AYP every year since opening in 2009. Those are bragging rights. Our next principal, Dr. Mary Stevenson from Pointer Ridge Elementary. Thirty-two years in education. This is Pointer Ridge's third year being recognized by MSDE. They are doing many things right out there in Bowie at Pointer Ridge. Our next principal, Dr. Janice Hay from Matapanai Professional Learning Community. Caring, capable, and committed staff, putting children first. Nice to have Dr. Hay here. The secret to the success includes staff, students, parents, everybody working together. She says it's no mystery when these things work. Thirty-five years she's been in education, Dr. Hay. Congratulations. Our next principal is Gloria McCoy from Glen Ridge. Oh, the home of Aaron Reed. Yes. All right. Thirty years in education. Nice to have you and your staff with us tonight. Good to have you back. Aaron's going to really milk this tonight, for as much as it's worth. As well he should. Our next principal from Avalon, Dr. Diane Bruce. Headed to a brand-new school, is that right? Headed to a brand-new school. We just broke ground recently. The students have received this recognition for several years, but we're not going to let up. We're going to keep on keeping on. Next. Please welcome, from Fort Foot, Dr. Madeline Goldsmith. Thanks to the Fort Foot family for all their work, she says. The staff has received this award in the past, and we hope we continue to receive it for many years to come. This is Susan Holiday from Gladys Noon Spellman Elementary. Twenty years in Prince George's County. Third year, third consecutive year, getting this recognition. And Ms. Holiday, I remember a few years back, also, your school does something very nice with bicycle safety with students. And I remember we were out there. That's a great program you have. How are you? This is Cheryl Franklin, the principal of Robert Gray Elementary. In the field of education for 17 years. The school is looking to make AYP again this year, and Robert Gray used to be Mary Bethune Jr. High many years ago. This is Brian Beduan from Tulip Grove, where children bloom. Get it? Tulip Grove. This is the sixth consecutive year that the children and the staff of Tulip Grove have been honored by the Maryland Department of Education. Great school. Our next principal, John Hansen Monasori's principal, Shara Chappell. Unfortunately, this will be her last time on the stage for this award because she is retiring. We wish you many good wishes and thank you for your service. This is the fifth year that John Hansen has received this award, while the principal at Robert Goddard Monasori made AYP every year as well. She's been a principal for 21 years. Congratulations, Ms. Chappell. Are you the principal? And what is your name? This is Kona Fasia Nape. And what is the school? Robert Goddard French Immersion. Nice to have you here. If I spoke French, I could do a much better job of this. My apologies. She's received the MSDA School Performance Recognition. Nice to have you here. Also, she did some work when she was in Canada, in Montreal, in Quebec City, and in France. She's continuing this record of academic achievement here in this country. So congratulations to our principal from Robert Goddard French Immersion. Thank you for your patience. This is Magnolia Elementary School's principal, Phyllis Gillens. Please welcome her to the stage. Twenty-six years in education. Third consecutive year the school has received this award. Very proud also of our first LEGO League Robotics Team, students in grades 2 through 6. Congratulations, Ms. Gillens. How are you? This is Valerie Gifford from Marlton Elementary. Known Valerie for years, she's the new principal at Marlton and is honored to receive this recognition, again making AYP every year down at that school. Congratulations. Our next honoree from Kenneworth Elementary is Rodney Henderson. Twenty-two years in education. Kenneworth continues to exemplify excellence because of staff members. Meaningful learning takes place there every day, as this award proves. This next gentleman, I'm getting tired of seeing him. We've been to his school, I think, how many, three, four times this year? Some of you know that of all the schools in Prince George's County, just one is a blue-ribbon school that is vying for a national blue ribbon. We have been there to recognize that achievement. Give him a hand. Whitehall's Jarenz Campbell. Five years in a row they've gotten this award. One of the many reasons why they will probably be going to the White House very soon. We're wishing you the best. Our next principal is Rolanetta Alfred Carmody Hills. Nineteen years in Prince George's County, four years at Carmody Hills. Through our guidance and hard work of the staff, the students, this is the second time receiving this award. Go Cougars, Carmody Hills. Nicely done. Our next principal is Jill Walker from Woodmore Elementary. Jill, you have a cheering section out there. Twenty-four years in education here, eight years at Woodmore as the principal. This is the first year Woodmore is getting this under my administration. I know how proud you are. This is the assistant principal at Bonne Mill, Sheila Ryan. Nice to have you here, Sheila. Are you in here, the place of Mr. Fitzgerald, tonight? Fifty-three years she has been in education, Sheila has. Twenty-three in Prince George's County and 30 in my hometown of Pittsburgh. Nice to have a Pittsburgher. Yes, indeed. Going downtown with yuns. Actually, she is excited that Bonne Mill's Destination Imagination Team will be going this week to the Global Competition in Knoxville, Tennessee. That's great. We'll be cheering for them. Thank you, Ms. Ryan. Oh, and Ms. Reed is coming back for the second time. We love to have her back here. Forty years in education. Credits academic success to rigorous arts integration program that invites cognitive challenges. Our winner of the Alvin Meyerberg Award, back again. Thank you, Ms. Reed. This is Lynn Stewie from Beacon Heights. Thirty-eight years in Prince George's County, five years as principal. Received this award twice before, and as Lynn likes to remind me, she and I started in Prince George's County at the exact same time. Don't we still look good? Yeah, right. Our next principal, Olga Pabon, Seat Pleasant Elementary. Here she comes. Seventeen years in Prince George's. Seat Pleasant has one of the largest autism programs in this county. We've made AYP, get this, for the past seven years. That's amazing. Congratulations. Our next principal, Carol Dimmy from Woodbridge Elementary. Nice to see you again, Carol. We were at your school this early this year. They've made They've made steady gains in reading and math for the past seven years. Our goal is to have every student realize their fullest potential. Absolutely right. Thank you, Carol. Our next honoree, Renita Alexander from Robert Frost. Another winner of the Maryland School Performance Award. Seventh time that Robert Frost has gotten this. A wonderful school, Robert Frost. Our next principal is Herman Whaley from Capitol Heights Elementary School. All right, all right. The applause meter is off the charts now. Herman, you packed the house. You packed the house tonight. Twenty-one years. This is the two thousand, this school's been identified as the 2012 Playful City USA Community, eligible to receive a grant of $20,000 to upgrade their school's playground. That's amazing. Congratulations to you. Our next principal, Patricia Wells from Panorama Elementary. Seventeen years in education. Panorama's a roaring success because they're making AYP for the third year in a row. Only school in Prince George's County with a regional program. They're PBS, PBIS Gold Winner, and this year, nobody noticed that we stuffed the ballot box for the Teacher of the Year, and we got away with it. Patricia Wells, congratulations. Noisemakers, come on out. You can go out. Absolutely. Any more principals out there? And those are our principals, the Maryland School Performance winners for 2011 and 12. The highlight of our program is this. The top students at all twenty-four of our high schools. They've waited four long years in many cases for this walk across the stage. They'll make another one at graduation. This is when we recognize their academic vigor and rigor as they come up and join us. Come on out, please. Bladensburg, is Bladensburg here, please? Bladensburg, come on out. Joining us, Morgan Killabru. And is Tremont here? Nice to see you. Welcome, welcome Tremont. We'll bring you out first. Our first valedictorian. It's always good to be first. You're first in many ways. This is Tremont McZeele from Bladensburg High School. Come on out, Tremont. And family. Tremont is the president of the student body. He's the president of the French Club, has been that for three years. I asked him, what kind of name is McZeele? He said, Mr. Zarin, I think it's Scottish. It was McGeele, but we changed it to Zeele because Zeele means enthusiasm and dedication. I bought it. It sounded good. Tremont is going to Dartmouth. He is getting all but $3,000 of the $61,000 he needs every year in scholarship money. That is tremendous. Tremont will be studying economics or psychology with the thought to being an MBA or medical school. He works at a daycare center and helps kids there. He does filing, he does secretarial work, he does it all. Tremont McZeele, top student, Bladensburg High School. Congratulations. The salutatorian at Bladensburg, please welcome, Morgan Killabru. Morgan and her family joining us. She's taken eight AP classes, including government, world history, literature, chemistry, and psychology. She's the president of the National Honor Society. She's an active member of the varsity swimming and softball team. She's a scholar athlete. And even though Tremont considered Cornell and decided instead to go to Dartmouth, Morgan says, I'll show you. I'm going to Cornell. That's where she's headed in Ithaca to major in animal sciences. Good luck to you, Morgan. Please welcome one of two valedictorians at Bowie High School, Ms. Danielle DeGregory. Danielle, please come on out. And her family. Danielle will be going to the University of Maryland, the Honors College, focusing on humanities to major in business and psychology. Her extracurriculars include varsity softball, ladies with class. And I was in Annapolis a few months ago, and there she was, Danielle, as a page in the Maryland General Assembly, doing a fantastic job. Every year, she volunteers in nursing homes and goes down to the Chesapeake Bay and jumps in on January first for the polar plunge to raise money for Special Olympics. She has a 4.125 GPA, and she is the recipient of an education scholarship from the city of Bowie. Danielle DeGregory, congratulations. Co-valedictorian at Bowie, Mr. Joel Vasquez. Come on out, Joel. Nice to meet you. And family, go on out, please. Joel was a former Scholar of the Week. This young man does everything. In fact, he sent me his resume. It's three pages long. This man is everything. He's the National Honor Society President, took ten advanced placement courses. He's on the ITZ Academic Television Show, Mock Trow, Model UN, worked for the American Red Cross. He too jumps in cold water on January first for the polar plunge. He is going to the University of Maryland Honors Program. He is undecided on his major, but he hopes to become an ambassador. He has a facility with language, and I love what he says here. He said he's definitely glad, now that he's graduating from Bowie, not to take any more AP tests, not to dissect a cat ever again, not to trip in the hallways, and not to have to rush to class to get caught in a hall sweep. Joel, I don't think anyone's ever going to sweep you up in a hall sweep. This is a, he's also won the Jose Ritzel Citizenship Award, which is the top young persons award in the Philippines. So you've done it all, young man. Congratulations to you. Our salutatorian at Bowie is Dominica Mejia Clavijo. Please welcome her and her family. She is going to the University of Maryland in Baltimore County. Her major is not yet decided. She is a member of the National Honor Society, ladies with class, philosophy club. She's in the band, the orchestra, and the marching band. She participated in freshman orientation, and I believe, if I remember correctly, the instrument you play? Violin, thank you very much. She said, I don't have any future plans since the future seems so far away. All I can say is that I hope to continue in higher education, get a number of degrees, perhaps pick up a scholarship, and continue learning my whole life long. She said, I am so happy to share this honor with my good friends Joel and Danielle. Very gracious. Nice to have you here, Dominica. These are the, this is the young man who came up earlier because he was a Scholar of the Week before. Olu Watobi Oki, come on out. We'll talk about you in just a second here. He is the valedictorian and his family. Obi, as they call him, get this, received a total in scholarship money of $199,000. He's going to the University of Maryland in College Park. He's going to major in physical therapy. And some of you might have read about this young man in the Gazette. He owns his own business called Good Lord Clothing. And all of the money that he and his partner make for designing and selling T-shirts, all of it is given away to a homeless shelter. He's an international baccalaureate student. He worked recently in the county council for the Register of Wills, and he is, had his pick of schools, and as I say, he's going to the University of Maryland. And one of his teachers, Ms. Endline, says, Toby is just one of those good kids. He's genuine, he's reliable, he's confident. He listens to everything I say, and when he recently went to a college fair, he came back with a gift for me. It was a packet from the University of Michigan, which was my alma mater. He's just that kind of kind kid. He can do it all. Obi, congratulations to you. Nice to have you here tonight. The flowers honorees are with us. We have a valedictorian, and we have two salutatorians. Would you please welcome our valedictorian? Is she on stage already? Yes, she is. Is she right behind? You should be up here the whole night. Would you please welcome Faith Jackson, student member of the Board of Education? Faith Jackson really needs no introduction. Faith is one of those Bill Gates Millennium Scholarship winners. She has this, money is no problem for Faith. She is going to America's premier college. She will be at Harvard in the fall. She has taken nine AP classes. She was, should not surprise you, one of the Scholars of the Week. Her counselor says that she is a natural leader, and she is in a good place because she is a student advocate. If she sees something wrong, she tries to address it. She doesn't rest until somebody does something. She interned recently with the Maryland Democratic Party, also with USDA, where her senior project involved organic pesticides. Is she just an academic? No. She plays soccer, she's a swimmer. When she gets to Harvard, she's going to make us proud. She wants to be a biomedical engineering major with a minor in international affairs. I think someday we're going to see this young lady in the White House. Faith Jackson, congratulations. Are you Jordan Brooks? Nice to have you here, Jordan. Would you please welcome the valedictorian from Croom High School, Jordan Brooks? You with Mr. Brooks? Please come on out. Mr. Brooks, much like Obi, is an entrepreneur. Jordan Brooks excelled at school this year at the Croom School. He was the 2012 Ernst &amp; Young Entrepreneur of the Year, Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship. He also has his own business called Threshold Graphics that he has run for the past couple of years. He also is a master when it comes to technology. He intends to go to the University of Maryland and major in business. He has six people working for him. He also is a member of Roots, which is a Christian Bible study group. Honor roll every semester at Croom 4.0, perfect attendance. This is the kind of student you all want. Jordan Brooks. Nice to have you here. Tiffany Wilson, or Tiff as they call her down at Croom. Had some challenges before she got to Croom. She met them all. She persevered. She's now SGA treasurer at her school. Valedictorian, 4.0 GPA, great leadership skills and compassion. She is going to Morgan State to study design. Tiffany, congratulations to you. After school, she conducted smaller classes where she tutored other students. The principal there told me when students come to Croom, they can no longer be invisible as they were at their former school. They step up, many of them. And Tiffany, because of all that she did, got the Turning Point Award for 11th and 12th graders, the award for a student who was most improved. Tiffany, congratulations on all that you did to get here tonight. Next, next, please. I'd like to see Frank Princessa come out. Would that be you? Nice to meet you. Come on out. Welcome, family. This is the valedictorian from Crossland High School, Frank Princessa. Please welcome into the stage. He's got a lot of supporters out there. Frank has a 4.0, principal's honor roll every marking period, college summit peer leader, principal's leadership team. Frank is going to Bowie State. He's going to be in the honors program. He's been offered a scholarship, and he plans to study pre-med in the not-too-distant future. This will be Dr. Frank Princessa. Thank you for all your great work. Dominica Beverly, salutatorian, Crossland High School. Nice to have you here. Ms. Beverly was also a Scholar of the Week. Her principal kept asking, when, where are you going to school? Where are you going to school? She finally narrowed it down. She's going to the University of North Carolina in Charlotte. She is no slouch. She's a great math student. She's going to be studying engineering. She has a scholarship that is worth $116,000. Congratulations, Dominica. Her long-term dream is to be an architect and design her own dream house inside and out. I bet it's going to be a good one. She knows sign language, and she's an excellent computer operator and programmer. She sings, she dances. She's a remarkable young lady, Dominica Beverly. Thank you, Dominica. This is Jira Silva. Jira Silva. Jira, nice to have you here and her family. Jira was a Scholar of the Week, 4.21 GPA. Jira has a remarkable story. She came to the United States at the beginning of her ninth grade year because of her mom's job. She was in such culture shock when she got here that she didn't say a word. Her classmates thought that she was mute because she didn't talk. She was experiencing that culture shock. She really wanted to go home. Boy, are we glad, are we glad she didn't. She went on. She distinguished herself. She became a peer tutor. She belongs to the Heartland Hospice of Beltsville Volunteer Group. She's in the National Arts Society, Art Honor Society. She's an assistant at the Gospel Life Church of Bowie. She has received so many science awards at the science fairs here, and she is headed to Johns Hopkins or the University of Maryland or St. John's. She hasn't decided which school. Whatever school gets her will be lucky. She wants to be a physician or a nurse practitioner because she wants to do something significant for society. You've done that already. Congratulations to you. Our salutatorian at Dr. Henry Wise is Rachel Brown. Rachel, come on out. Rachel, in her whole career, since she came from a military family, every couple of years she was moving, and yet she was on the honor roll wherever she went in the world. She has received an appointment to the Naval Academy in Annapolis. She'll be studying mechanical engineering. She wants to go on and specialize in submarines and designing robots. She has a 4.4 GPA. She is still a Girl Scout, and she has won Girl Scouts Top Silver Trophial Medal. She has hundreds of hours of community service, belongs to the Japanese Culture Club, and recently went to Japan for a week. You are an international young lady. Rachel Brown, congratulations to you. Duval, thank you. Is Joan there? Joan, come on out. This is Joan, is it Tsi? Tai? Joan Tai. Nice to have you with us. Joan, as we told you, spoke no English before the 10th grade. Here she is as the valedictorian for Duval High School. She's a remarkable young lady. She's going to the University of Maryland in College Park. We're glad she's staying close. She's going to major in accounting, and her counselor says that Joan is my baby. She was born here, she left, but she came back, and she lived most of her life, as I say, in Taiwan. She's taken AP Literature and other AP classes. Get this, on her math SAT, she got 780, the top 1% of the country. Her parents are here for her graduation. It's nice to have them here on stage. And she has done 280 community service hours in just the last two years with Meals on Wheels and working at a hospital, and she tutors students in Chinese who want to learn the language. Joan, congratulations to you. Remarkable. The salutatorium from Duval is Nicole Esuela. Nicole, come on out. Nicole is interested in politics and international affairs. She has a $17,000 scholarship to Mercer University in Atlanta, Georgia. Some of her community service hours were done helping her mom. Is mom here tonight? That's Dr. Mom. You're the dentist, aren't you? Yes, indeed. I bet it's good to have your daughter helping you next to you there. She's involved in the SGA. She loves politics. And where is Mr. Harrison? Mr. Harrison, the principal is here. Mr. Harrison, when your nomination to be principal was being debated, I understand that you had no bigger advocate than Nicole. She was out there speaking. She is a very forceful speaker. She's going to be a great politician someday. We're sorry she's going to leave us for a few years as she goes down to Atlanta, but she is going to be, always be remembered at Duval for the work she did. Nicole Esuela, salutatorian, congratulations. Eleanor Roosevelt. Hi, are you Lydia? Nice to have you. Is Ji Guo here? She is not. Please welcome the salutatorian from Eleanor Roosevelt, Lydia Nichols Russell. Lydia is staying close to home, too. She's going to the University of Maryland. Lydia is staying close to home too. She's going to the University of Maryland in College Park. And the reason why everyone is smiling is because she has a full ride. She has the Banneker Key Scholarship that pays for everything. She's going to major in environmental science, French, or social studies, or a combination thereof. This young lady has taken 12 AP classes. She's on the varsity cross-country team, on the championship team. She ran the Marine Corps Marathon at age 16, did all 26 miles. She is also a member of the epilepsy foundation, raises money for them, helped clean up the Anacostia. She is also, I love this, she's a big Harry Potter fan. She's the third-place finisher in the high school world championship for Quidditch, which is that odd lacrosse-like game in Harry Potter. And she is also a thespian. She has played in The Tempest. And I understand, Lydia, you recently were Alice in Alice in Wonderland. I can see that. Nice to have you here. Thank you for bringing everybody along with you. Congratulations. Fairmont Heights. Do we have Sarah Julie? Come on out. Sarah Julie Chikani, valedictorian from Fairmont Heights. Welcome her, please. She will be attending Ohio State in the fall. She is a vice president of National Honor Society. Her brother Prince, is Prince here tonight? Is your brother here? Brother Prince also attends Fairmont Heights. She is also a Scholar of the Week. She wants to major in political science. She wants to have a career as a corporate lawyer. She has logged 100 community service hours. She's an Air Force Junior ROTC Cadet. Participated in cleanups of the community. And she also is, and this is hardly insignificant, she was a finalist for the Gates Millennium Scholarship. Also offered scholarships at Temple and Towson. And it's, this is very interesting. I asked your counselor, Sarah, what is it that she does at school that's kind of quirky or interesting? Your counselor said, "You know, in AP English, they play medieval bingo." I think I'd like to see that and hear that someday. Medieval bingo. Sarah Julie Chikani, our valedictorian. Congratulations. Forestville. I recognize the uniforms. I know I couldn't be wrong. Please welcome Mr. Kenton Deschard Connors, valedictorian. Please join us on stage. Kenton has received a total of $52,800 in scholarship offers. This young man is a Scholar of the Week. He's interested in pursuing civil engineering. He's going to the Rochester Institute of Technology to study civil engineering. He's on the track in the baseball teams. He's been a volunteer for Senior Olympics. He's also spent community service hours cleaning up or working for the Clearwater Nature Center. He's an All-Star Soccer Team Player Awardee. And he receives the highest of recommendations from Yvette Thomason, the senior school counselor. Congratulations. The salutatorium from Forestville is Nia Boone here. Come on out, Nia. You look good in your uniform. She's going to Towson. And I don't know that we've had anybody else study this. She's going to study nursing at Towson. Congratulations. She has worked at Six Flags. She has the Delta Sigma Theta and McDonald's scholarships totaling $1,500. And she is a cheerleader. A cheerleader for her athletic team and for her school as well. Nia Boone, and your geography teacher told me, Nia, that you were the only one that he's ever had that has gotten the AP Geography, got a three or four on the test the first time you tried it. So you know the world inside out. Congratulations to you. Frederick Douglass. Our valedictorian, Frederique Thompson. Come on out. Hi, Frederique. Frederique was a Scholar of the Week. She volunteers at the Special Olympics. She's a member of the Future Business Leaders of America. She's going to the University of Maryland here in College Park to major in psychology. Planned to be a mental health specialist. She's gotten a special award from the Lions Club, $500. She is a Japanese aficionado. She belongs to the Anime Club, the Japanese Host Club. And she would like to study abroad in Japan. In fact, Frederique called me yesterday and she said, "Mr. Zarin, I'm going to Japan on June 8th for a week and a half. It will be a lifelong dream. She'll be part of an exchange program." We're very happy for you, Frederique. Bon voyage to you. Here is the salutatorian from Frederick Douglass. Please meet David Andrews. David Lawrence, excuse me. David Lawrence. David Andrews also has a nice ring to it. David Lawrence. David and I had a long talk on the phone. This guy's terrific. He's a scholar athlete. He swims, he golfs, he plays football. But six months ago, he had an injury. He damaged his ACL. He's been in therapy, long time, and on May 22nd, tomorrow, it'll be six months, and he tells me he'll be back 100%. Is that right, Dave? All right. And because of what he went through, he's decided he wants to become a physical therapist himself. And is going to Slippery Rock College in Pennsylvania where he'll be pursuing that. And we wish him much luck. That's David Lawrence. Friendly High School. Yes, come on out. Our valedictorian, Gabrielle Gilbert. I love your name. Here's Gabrielle. Is your brother Myron with you? Myron is here, last year's valedictorian. Gabrielle is headed to Hampton University. And I love that she's got a full tuition scholarship, but not room and board. We're still working on that. She wants to be a book editor because she figures she loves to read. Why not get paid for it? I like that. She has been a member of Dominic's Dance Company for 10 years. She is an accomplished dancer, accomplished hand dancer. She's been in mock trial for three years. She's also been in a hand dancing competition for the past year. She's the president of the National Honor Society and the National Art Honor Society. And she has been working for Keystone Auto Insurance. I said, "What was that like?" She said, "I was a file clerk and boy, did I learn to be a good typist, a skill that will keep me happy my whole life long." Isn't that the truth? Valedictorian Gabrielle Gilbert. Great family. Our salutatorian from High Point High School, Maissa Monga Barnard. Come on out. Nice to have you with us and bring your family. Good to have you with us tonight. Very large family. Sandy, nice to have you here. Thanks for joining us. His principal. Maissa is going to the University of Maryland in College Park. A double major in physics and bioengineering. Took eight AP classes. This means an awful lot to him. He also received the Superintendent's Award, one of which is given to one student at each school. He's in the top 5% of merit scholars in the state of Maryland. He volunteers at the Aviation Museum in College Park, just as the valedictorian does. Maissa is on the indoor track and field team. Listen to all this stuff. He was the president of the National Honor Society, Ecology Club, the Civics Club, the Chemistry Club, the Robotics Club. He stays late every day. He's a member of the mock trial team that was the county champ, and he helps to edit the literary magazine. This young man wanted to be valedictorian so badly that he took AP Calculus online over the summer. And he's so excited to go to college because he just loves to learn. I'm sure that's part of the tradition that's been handed down to him by his family. And he came very close to being a valedictorian. In the greater scheme of things, it makes no difference. You are one of the top students of the very best in our county. Congratulations to Maissa. Toni Hinton. Toni Hinton, nice to see you here. Here is Toni Hinton, valedictorian from Largo. She was just up here as a Scholar of the Week. Toni is a real scholar athlete. She's plays softball. She plays volleyball, team captain both. She was a female scholar athlete in 2008 and this in 2011. Principal's honor roll, science fair winner, summit peer leader, blood donor. She's going to Morgan State, as we mentioned earlier, to study actuarial science. Received a full scholarship to go to Morgan State. That's the kind of young lady she is. Congratulations. Jade? Jade. Jade Davis, salutatorian. Here she is. Please welcome from Largo High School, Jade and her family. Jade is the class president, a big lady on campus. She was the captain of the cheerleading team. She was Miss Largo this year. And she's the president of, I like the name, Heaven's Little Angels Dance Ministry. She's going to Boston University. She wants to act in movies and television shows. She wants to own her own theater company and teach acting classes. She wants to work in radio. This young lady is destined for the limelight. You can tell just by looking at her. She's been an usher in her church, a Sunday School teacher. She coaches the Boys and Girls Club, Helping Hands. She has consistently had a 4.0, great point average on the track team in addition to be a cheerleader. This young lady, she does it all. Jade Davis, our salutatorian. Congratulations. Come on out. Stephanie, congratulations to you. Here is valedictorian Stephanie Jeanette Viljalta and her family. Stephanie, I hardly know where to begin. She's going to the University of Maryland College Park, wants to become a politician, eventually hopes to be a senator. Wants to major in political science. Gotten the Comcast Scholarship and McDonald's Educate Scholarship, it's worth $3,000. Looking at this young lady, and Stephanie, you are, you're dressed beautifully tonight. No one would know what you do on the side. If you're driving around Prince George's County and you see a tow truck that has SJV on the side, it's named for Stephanie because that's her dad's company. SJV stands for Stephanie Jeanette Viljalta. She helps her dad. This young lady can change a tire, change spark plugs, put your car on the back of a pickup like nobody's business. Her dad has also taught her because he's a master carpenter, she also can help you build a house. This young lady is a catch in many ways. Let me tell, give her a nice hand, Stephanie. She's an international baccalaureate student. She's taken so many AP classes. They call her AP Emeritus. Her counselor, Ms. Colin Swain, says that she's everything a scholar should be. And I want to say that her teacher, her social studies teacher, Lauren Boyd, said that she likes to tease you, Stephanie, because your name reminds her of Sonia Sotomayor, the Supreme Court Justice. You turned the tables because you got to meet that justice on a field trip when she was downtown at the Supreme Court. And your art teacher says she's never seen you have a bad day and that, I don't know what they're going to do without you because you have done so much for Laurel, raising money for earthquake victims and being part of the debate team and just helping in any way you can that Laurel will not be the same without you. Stephanie, congratulations to you and your family. Rotimi? All right. Please welcome valedictorian from Oxon Hill, Rotimi Ramon Babalola and his family. I didn't have a lot of material on this young man, so I called his house last Friday. His mother answered. It was 2:00 in the afternoon. She said, "He's asleep." I said, "Shouldn't he be in school?" She said, "Well, it was the last day of classes and they let them out early." But we woke him up, and I'm glad we did because we found out a lot about this young man. He's going to the University of Maryland in Baltimore County to study accounting. He is a very meticulous young man, great with math and technology. He wants to receive his bachelor's degree and go on and continue in the field of accounting. He has lots of people saying nice things about him. As he's up at UMBC, these words, boy, hope be ringing in his ears. He was also a member of the, some of the things that they said about him. "Your international cuisine teacher," Rotimi said, "the meek shall inherit the earth." And Rotimi is one of those very meek-mouthed and intelligent individuals who is so dedicated to what he does. He doesn't make a lot of waves. He keeps to himself, but he really helps his, the peers around him and the staff. He is the only student who passed the US History Exam AP as a freshman. This young man has a 4.1 GPA. We wish him the best of luck at the University of Maryland, Baltimore County. Rotimi Babalola, valedictorian. Congratulations. Is Brittany here? Brittany McCoy. Here she is, the salutatorian. She's been waiting a long time. A long time she's been waiting. Brittany has been all four years in the Science and Tech Program, going to University of Maryland College Park. She's a model and a dancer. She looks like she could do those things very easily. She has been taking AP classes since she was a freshman, part of the Future Business Leaders of America. She helps to greet visitors, a visitor to school, 4.13 GPA. Been playing the piano for six years, and every Christmas she makes baskets for children with special needs. It sounds like she's done it all and you've gotten back what you've given and then some. She was awarded a total of $348,650.50 in scholarship dollar, down to the cent mark. Congratulations, Brittany. She wants to own her own business someday. We wish you a lot of luck at College Park. You're going to be a great business major. Nice to have you here. This is Ruth Pettit Home, valedictorian from Parkdale. Please welcome her. Ruth is going to go to the University of Maryland in College Park. I think the whole freshman class is going to be Prince George's graduates. $9,500 in grants and scholarships. She wants to be an OB-GYN. And she wants to go back to her native Haiti and get this, work with women because they are treated poorly in Haiti. They have a lot of medical issues that are not being addressed. She knows that she can be of great help to that country. And of course, in the wake of the earthquake, they need that help. She's the secretary of the SGA, member of the African Caribbean Club, and an international baccalaureate student. And I know her principal Cheryl Logan thinks the world of her. Valedictorian Ruth Petit Om. Nice to have you here. Nina Manio. Please come out. This is the salutatorian from Parkdale and her family. Nina Rosel Manio. From the Philippines. Took AP classes. Nina, you're going to the Prince George's Community College and then transfer to a four-year university. She's going to major in computer engineering and she's awaiting scholarships. And if they're smart, they're going to give you all the money that you need. We wish you the best of luck. And Ms. Logan also says that you are very quiet, but a very important part of the Parkdale family. And we are going to miss you. Good luck to you and we'll see you on the community college campus. Thank you very much. Nina Manio. Is this Kewanda? She was just in the paper last week. So was her principal, Robin Prince. I opened the paper and there she is, the winner of a Gates Millennium Scholarship, Kewanda Robinson. Kewanda, she can go anywhere she wants. She's going to Virginia State University. Kewanda, is your mom here tonight? This young lady is going to be studying physical therapy and occupational therapy because her mom has had bad knees and she wants to do something to help her mom and people like her. Isn't that great? You're wonderful, Kewanda. You're wonderful. She was a congressional page for Donna Edwards, our US Representative, member of the National Honor Society, SGA. A 3.84 GPA. And Kewanda, your principal says that she has hardly ever met anyone as conscientious, reliable, or as responsible as you. You have done so much for your school, inside and outside of school. You have a love of learning that influences everybody around you. So you're not just about yourself. You are a role model for all of the other students. You are a remarkable valedictorian. And like I say, that picture of you screaming with your principal in the Gazette when you got the news, the millennium was worth 1,000 words. Darnell, nice to meet you. Welcome to the stage. Come on out, everybody. I've been waiting to meet this guy. You know, sometimes when you're very young, you know not just what you want to do, you know where you want to do it. That's his story. Darnell Lisby has always dreamt of being the director of the Metropolitan Museum of Art in New York City. Not the assistant director, the director. So he got an internship and went there last summer. And he got a scholarship of $18,000 from St. John's University in Queens, which is just up the street from the museum. So he is lining himself up for a perfect crosstown subway trip from school to the Metropolitan Museum. We wish you luck. A great aspiration. Daryl Lisby. This is the salutatorian, Oma Kayani Udyani. Nice to have you here and his family. Nice to have you here and his family. Oma Kayani, are any of your brothers with you here tonight? Any brothers with them? Any of your brothers here? I talked to your principal. Your principal says that you are the last of three Udyani boys at Suitland. Is that right? And all three of them have been in the top 1% of their classes. What a great family. What a great family. Oma Kayani is going to North Carolina State to be a chemical engineer. He is in the international baccalaureate program. And I caught him last week just as he was about to go to the prom at the Four Seasons, no less. But it took time to tell me that he actually substituted for one of the teachers at Suitland who was taken ill and took over the class. So he is so respected by his peers that they respected him as a teacher when the need arose. So a remarkable salutatorian. Congratulations. Excuse me. Are you a Scholar of the Week from Suitland? Would you come on out, please? Come on out. Yes, young man. We had the Scholars of the Week earlier in the program. He is joining us now. We welcome him to the program. Joshua, thank you for being here. Joshua's from Suitland. He's the captain of the swim team, vice president of the Honor Society. He's a Boy Scout. Joshua, are you about to get an Eagle Scout? Boy, that's remarkable. Give him a hand. Eagle Scout is amazing. He's going to the University of Maryland, College Park. He's been accepted there. Have you accepted? Are you going there? You're going to University of Maryland. Study biochemistry and molecular biology. He's done 200 community service hours. He did a summer program at Walter Reed, and he's a member of the National Society of Black Engineers. They gave him an award recently. He received the Maryland Incentive Award. That is remarkable. You're going to have lots of scholarship help at the University of Maryland. The incentive award is for $100,000 if I'm correct. No wonder you're all smiling up there. Absolutely right. Thanks for joining us. Thank you, Mr. Pike, for taking the picture. This is Rolanda Erica Kelly, president of SGA. And this young lady, Rolanda, she is a member of the junior ROTC. Rolanda has many nicknames. Rolanda, do they really call you Grandma? Because she acts so old for such a young person. That's a terrible endearment. She's on the volleyball court often. She's a wing commander in the junior ROTC. And your principal wrote this about you, your principal, Kristy Holden. She's a great lady. She said, "It took forever for Rolanda to finally settle on a school." I was always asking her, where are you going? Where are you going? She's going to High Point University in North Carolina, which is amazing. Every time I summoned her to the principal's office to celebrate one of her many accomplishments, I would say, "You're in trouble." And her eyes would always get really big as if she really had done something wrong, and she fell for that ruse every time. You're very gullible, Ms. Holden. She knew what buttons to push. So we wish you an awful lot. You're going to be studying health sciences. You're going to major in health sciences. You want to be a pediatrician someday. Is that right? And she's received, she's applied for 12 scholarships. She's received a grant. We wish you much luck in getting many more scholarships, and we're going to miss you at Suratsville. I know Ms. Holden's going to miss you an awful lot. Thanks for being here and your family. Marquita Hill is here. Nice to welcome you back to the stage. Marquita was a Scholar of the Week. She's the one who got into Spelman College. I understand, Marquita, you had 48 hours to make your decision, and you got all the paperwork done. You got early admission to Spelman College. She's going to be a biology major. She's the one who wants to be the forensic odontologist, the bite marks that help to solve a crime. Again, a remarkable career plan. She says, "I want to do more than live the American dream. I want to be remembered for my achievements and my character. I want to do everything possible to help someone." She's an ROTC honor guard, peer mediator. And let me, oh, this is interesting. Marquita, I think you won't mind if I share this. Ms. Holden says that when you came to Suitland, you used to wear glasses that looked like the bottom of Coke bottles. And you mostly kept yourself. But by the 11th grade, Marquita had her contacts, and she was the social butterfly. Now you can't hold her back. One of Marquita's favorite things to do is to watch Law &amp; Order. She has all the past episodes, and she watches them over and over and over again. Hence her career aspiration. Thanks for sharing all that. Thank you, Ms. Holden, for all of that, too. Congratulations. Are these the Tall Oaks folks? You've waited a long time. Here you are, the last people tonight. Where's Antoinette Griffin? Come on out. Griffin, nice to have you here. Antoinette Griffin. Two weeks ago, she was the outstanding work-study student at a gala at Martin's Crosswinds. Antoinette, she was a star cheerleader at Ernest Just Middle School. She went to Tall Oaks where her family found the smaller class size really suited their child. She went to Tall Oaks, soon got a 3.75 GPA. She grew up a lot, and we're sad to see here, Antoinette, that you had a car accident. Hopefully you've recovered from that, but apparently that was a very pivotal moment in your change and your academic pivot down there at Tall Oaks. You've become, according to your principal, a very successful young woman inside and out. And since as a little girl, you liked to sit with your mom. Is your mom here tonight? You did nails and hair with your mom. She now wants to go into cosmetology full-time. That's her passion. She wants to have, she works now at a technicolor salon at the Boulevard, and she's going to attend Harmony Beauty College this summer and Howard University in the spring of 2012, where she will major in nursing. Congratulations. What a great career plan you have. And our last honoree. We save the best for last. Would you please welcome salutatorian Deja Monroe. Deja, come on out. Deja has majored in child development at Tall Oaks. She did her internship at the YMC in Bowie, completed 125 hours there. She recently won an essay contest titled, "What a Profession and Education Means to Me." Deja also has a full-time job at Chick-fil-A. She has worked community service hours at Leaders Institute in Silver Spring. And despite a pretty full schedule, her principal says, "Don't dismay. Don't think she's a bookworm." Deja also has time for the boys. She really likes the boys. She loves music, and she changes her hair every single day. Does Antoinette do the hair for you, Deja? As your principal says, congratulations, Day Day. You've made us all proud at Tall Oaks, and you've made us proud tonight. Our salutatorian. Congratulations. We've had a long night. Thank you for staying the entire evening. Could you give the board and Dr. Benita Coleman Potter a hand for standing up there? Thank you all. We have a reception for all of you outside.